I'm Tom Harden, editor of the Southside Sentinel. I was asked to do this job. I've never done it before, but I eagerly accept it. First, we're going to have opening remarks in two minutes, and Bob LaBust will be first to start.
My goals as supervisor are to develop a strong economy in Middlesex to create more employment opportunities and to broaden our tax base. It'll help everybody in Middlesex County. That's not campaign rhetoric. It's what I've been doing for four years, and I'll continue to do it for another four years if you reelect me. As you probably know, I have a strong background in budgeting, program management, and strategic planning. I know how to formulate a budget, and I know how to analyze a budget. More important, I know the tricks people like to use when they formulate a budget. I actually like budgeting work. I know how to manage programs, large and small. I know how to build things from houses to museums to space satellites. I know how to design, procure, and deliver systems of all kinds. I know how to plan strategically and tactically. I know how to transform a vision into goals, goals into objectives, and objectives into actions. And now, I know how to turn actions into results, and you're beginning to see those here in Middlesex. Consider our progress on the new public safety radio system, central water, central sewer, and broadband service. Finally, I've lived in the county for about 16 years now. I know a lot about Middlesex citizens and what they need. I've spent thousands of hours volunteering at a variety of organizations, from the old Rapid Hand Excel and Power Squadron to the new Middlesex Foundation. No individual, group, or organization speaks for the entire county. Supervisors represent the entire county's interests and should make decisions based on knowledge of the entire county's needs, rational thought, and sound judgment, not on what's emotionally appealing or who's yelling the loudest. No supervisor should need a referendum on every issue to decide what comes before the board. Summarize, I have a great deal of relevant experience and a record of accomplishment. I'm also willing to continue to work for you, the citizens of Middlesex County, if you'll have me.
Thank you all for coming. My name's John Koontz. I didn't plan on becoming a candidate, but 16 months ago, I started attending board meetings, coincidentally with the 2016 budget finalization process. And I met a lot of my neighbors that night out on the front lawn at the Saluda Courthouse because we couldn't change the venue, even though we knew that there was going to be a significant amount of people that were concerned about what was going on with our county's budget. I got up and spoke, but then I got up, or I sat down rather, and I listened. And I listened to a lot of people in our community rolling in front of that board, and what I saw was a board that didn't seem to be listening. In the paper today, one of the things that I saw was that Bob was saying what he hears most often is a very small sampling of public opinion. In the last 12 months, I've been out getting a bigger sampling of public opinion, and what I'm hearing is that we're concerned about the direction of our county. Where Bob has been frustrated and finds us in the doldrum, I see a lot of hardworking people, 86% of whom are commuting out of the county, and I see us with a lower unemployment rate than the state of Virginia, than the United States. And so what I see is hardworking people that choose Middlesex over any other place. This is where they want to live, and this is where they want to work. And I see it as the responsibility of our supervisors to do more than to sit in the courthouse and listen. They need to get out and talk to you people, and that's why we're having a forum here tonight. I had an hand in making sure that this forum happened when I realized we had one in double and only Pete and I were attending. I think that's wrong, and that's not the kind of candidate I intend to be, and it's not the type of supervisor I intend to be. I intend to be somebody that comes around and listens to your thoughts, and I can tell you I've managed budgets over $20 million and projects that have to be brought in on time and on budget, and I also am very good at those things.
I've been for many years when I retired from my county position as the Assistant County Administrator to run the board supervisors. You all know I've been with the county almost 31 years, this after 30 years of board meetings. Working with your fellow board members is so very important. If you want to make your one vote count, you have to have the respect of your fellow board members, and you have to give them the respect they deserve. I have worked with many board members over the years, and most of them have admired the quality of my work and my enthusiasm for the county. I'm running for the Saluda District seat because I feel I am right for the position. I feel the Saluda District in Middlesex County needs a fifth person at the table ready to work with the other four members of the board. I have a thorough understanding of local government in Middlesex County. Middlesex has a $24.6 million budget for FY '18, which I work with daily. There are several big projects going on in the county now, as you all know. Sewer, water have been needed badly, especially in the lower end of the county, for a long time, and it looks as though they're going to happen. We're looking at needed public access, and we have our E-911 radio system ready to be installed. All of these are big-ticket items. The E-911 system is already a line item in the budget. It affects all the citizens of the county, and our tax dollars will pay for this. It's my belief that water and sewers should be paid for by the people who use them. I feel very fortunate to live in a county that I love and to have worked for such a wonderful county. I am a come here, but it has been home to me for 35 years, and I want to be your board member representing the Saluda District. Thank you.
I graduated from junior tech with a degree in engineering, followed by a successful career with Fortune 500 companies, and in the meantime, I was granted 28 paths. My wife Judy and I raised our two children on Annemarie Island in Florida. Our decision to move to Middlesex was made after we fell in love with the beauties of the Urbana-Hartford in the summer of 1996 while visiting this area. Throughout the past 20 years, life on our banner creek has been a wonderful experience which we have enjoyed sharing with our five grandchildren, each son. On November 3rd, 2009, it was a tremendous honor to be elected to serve my first term as supervisor in the Saluda District. Four years later, I again appreciated your vote of confidence. Many of you probably knew me and know that I am financially conservative, therefore we should follow Middlesex County's purchasing code procedure that requires multiple bids. The PPA purchasing system allowed us to spend $5 million without a competitive quotation. I'm afraid that our board of supervisors have become polarized, and the above purchases purchase was a perfect example. When I complained that this was sole source purchasing, one of the supervisors presented a PowerPoint that showed we had saved $441,000 with the Harris Company. For the next meeting, I obtained a nighted cost sheet by a competitor company, Tate, and some of you have these that show it actually cost us $1.5 million more than.
Many residents have requested a 7:00 PM meeting time for supervisor meetings instead of the current 3:00 PM start time on the first Tuesday of each month. These residents say meeting at 3:00 PM does not allow them the opportunity to attend the meetings due to work and childcare obligations. Would you, as supervisor, consider moving the meeting time tonight, or do you feel the 3:00 PM time is adequate? Please explain your reason.
So I was one of the residents, constituents, that was attending the meetings and was advocating in my three minutes of public comment available that we should move the meeting to 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock. And I heard one or two other citizens at each of the times that I went to the meetings because I started going after last April to just about every meeting, every first Tuesday of the month. And I heard others saying the same thing. And at one point, we were offered, when I spoke with individuals on the board, that we have contractors that can't make it after hours, and we need to cater to our contractors. And the suggestion I made was the people we need to cater to are our constituents. The contractors are paid by us, the constituents, and the money is channeled through our board to these contractors. I work with contractors all the time, and when you pay them, they come to you, and you're the customer. Now, what we are as constituents are people that are 86% of us commuting out of the county. So for those of us that are working and have children in the schools and are playing or have kids playing sports or coaching sports or in Cub Scouts, whatever we're involved in, 3:00 doesn't work. And we've tried to tell that to the board, and some members have been receptive and others haven't. And I would, if elected, make a point of trying to make the argument to the other four supervisors that this is something worth considering. In fact, I sat during one of these board meetings where one of the discussions was something I was less interested in. I don't recall what it was, but I got on my computer, which I bring my work laptop, and when the discussion gets somewhere where I'm less interested or feel like the county's doing the right thing and doesn't require my supervision, I do some work on my work computer because 3:00 is still working hours for me as it is for so many others. But I started Googling, and I found that about 16 out of 18 surrounding counties are meeting at 5:00 or after. So some of these contractors are being inconvenienced in the neighboring counties, and I think we could have them inconvenienced for our needs as constituents. And I also think the reason this is important is transparency is something that comes when you don't feel comfortable in an empty room making decisions for the entire county. How do you get more people interested and engaged in politics? You make it easier for them to come and see what's going on. You can't just read the Sentinel. That is not good citizenry. You have to get involved. And I think this community is at a crossroads, and we are in a place where we really need to start having more discussions about what's going on on the so many critical issues that are facing our county, and we need to know where our supervisors stand. And that's why my campaign is one of transparency, one of accessibility. My number's 804-564-8852. You can call me anytime. I want to talk about this county because this is where I want to raise my family.
One of the reasons the business meeting of the board starts in the afternoon has been because of consultants coming down from Richmond or just being able to utilize staff. I think it'd be wonderful to change the time to make it more convenient. However, we also have an aging population that doesn't wish to be on the road at 11:00 at night. If your public hearings don't start till 10:00 at night, then they're on the road back to Richmond at midnight. You have a hard time with that. So I have two suggestions. Number one, we're going to televise them, then everybody can look at the meetings if they don't wish to be there. And number two, maybe a suggestion would be to have it on Saturday so that they start at a normal timeline and not make people be on the road late at night. So that's my two suggestions.
Start out by saying I agree with John. Can I sit down now? I really believe that we've got to make it really more comfortable for people to attend the meeting. We start at 3:00 in the afternoon, but we don't, we could be taking things that are not of general interest to the entire public, like somebody wants a zoning change or something like that. That could be discussed at 3:00, and you know, if you wanted a zoning change, by golly, you could get there at 3:00. But for a working person who just wants to attend the meeting and find out what's going on in Middlesex County, we could start those meetings at 7:00, and we'd be finished by 8:30 or at latest 9:00. And everybody would be accommodated. I don't understand our rigid, it's got to be this way, talking about things that are of interest to everyone. We could arrange that time so that they could, people, working people could be there. Thank you very much.
Typically have continued to meet in the afternoon for our business meeting for reasons that Marsha mentioned. Getting people who are contractors or others who work during the day and find it easier to come from Richmond, for example, during the day than during the night is one consideration. Another consideration is we have separated our public hearings into the evening sessions so that no one ever has to miss a public hearing because it's being held at an inconvenient time. My suggestion would be that at the coming meeting in January, the organizational meeting, we consider this once again as we usually do. I would not be opposed to trying something different, but I emphasize trying. We have meetings afternoon and evening where if Tom Johnny is the one person in the audience, that's a full house as far as most of our meetings are concerned. If public interest warrants it, if we try an evening meeting, fine, change it to an evening meeting. The logistical problems, though, are we sometimes start our meetings at 3:00, work through dinner, and finish at 8:00 or 9:00. If you're starting at 7:00 and add six hours to that, you've got a very late meeting, and that's doing no favor at all to the people who are attending. So I'm open to different arrangements as far as our meeting time is concerned, but I'd say do it cautiously. Let's try it for a time, see if it works. If it does, adopt it. If it doesn't, go back to the old way of doing it. And by the way, in the four years that I've done a supervisor, I think I could probably count on the fingers of two hands the number of people who really have made an issue of the meeting time.
Many people have said the public comment periods at the supervisor meetings do not give them enough time to voice their concerns, and most importantly, they receive no feedback from their supervisors on their concerns. Would you, as a supervisor, consider holding a town hall, town hall-type meeting in your district, say twice a year or once a quarter, to hear and, most importantly, answer concerns of your constituents?
The public comment period is set, it's three minutes, for each citizen that wishes to state any views or ask questions of the board. The board generally does not respond, as Tom said, and it's because, first of all, I guess they need to consider what's been said. In my opinion, if somebody stood up and was interested in something, I would be glad to email them afterwards. If someone comes before the board and represents a group of people, then they get 12 minutes to talk, and generally, not many people have to use the 12 minutes. So the second part of that is, would I consider a town hall meeting? Yes. If my constituents would want a town hall meeting twice a year, I would have no problem with that. I'm always available to, I think pretty much everybody knows where I live. I'm writing Saluda on the main drag. Anybody can have my phone number, my email address, and so I'm available 24/7. But if a town hall meeting is what's warranted, then certainly I would do that.
I also feel that the three minutes is probably not enough, and I don't see any reason why we cannot give people five minutes and suggest that they stick with three minutes if they possibly can. But as far as, as far as having no inner, being able to have any conversations with our constituents other than meeting outside, I think that is wrong also. I think that we ought to have some inner talking back and forth if they've got a problem, and we can help answer it at the time. As far as having two or three town hall-type meetings, that is an excellent idea, and quite frankly, I have tried to do that. Probably not as much as it should be done, but town hall meetings are the very best, especially if we've got a very controversial subject to talk about. Thank you.
The rules and procedures are based on Robert's Rules of Order, and if you're not familiar with them, they've been developed over decades, if not centuries, as a means of expediting the conduct of a business meeting. We have a business meeting, and it has to have rules. The reason why the public comment periods are one way is for the sake of order. If we had public comment periods breaking down into debate periods, which is what would happen if you had someone making a public comment, a board member responding, more public comment, more board member, there would be no way to control the length of the meeting. Now, you may say controlling the length of the meeting is a bad thing, but if you have to get some business done and you have a certain amount of time to do it, you really need some order. Boards of supervisor members, supervisors, if you will, have made known their phone numbers and their emails. Nobody should be shy about contacting their supervisor if they have an issue. You don't need a public forum to tell your supervisor that you have a problem, which he or she may bring up at the next Board of Supervisor meeting. You're also free to submit items for the agenda at the meeting. The attempt is always to keep things orderly and moving along in an expeditious way. There's a balance between giving people their say and getting business done, and we have found that the current format, and I'm open to change if there's a good reason, we have found that the current format is the best balance between allowing people to speak and allowing the board to get its business done.
You shouldn't be shy about contacting your supervisor, but I don't think your supervisor should be shy about contacting you either. You haven't seen me as a supervisor, so I'll tell you what I would do. I think the three minutes could easily be given a grace period, something like what Pete suggests, where we try to hold three, but if somebody's got an impassioned plea, we don't cut them off and run them off the stage, and we give them an extra overtime. And if that means that everybody's going to get an extra two minutes, right now, there's about 10 or 15 public speakers at most, except for last April, I think I've got that half hour for the county. The four things that I mean to implement as a supervisor, I'm going to collect your emails, those of you that are interested, I'm going to solicit them. I'm going to beg you for them because I'm going to send you a newsletter with what I see and my perspective of what's going on in the county, what the business of the county, your county, is. So I want your emails. If I get elected, I want to be sending you this information, and I don't want to go in your spam folders. I want you to be active and engaged. You'll have to say it again. The newsletter is one part of it. The town hall, I think, is a great idea, and I think it would be wonderful, if it's okay with the Robert's rules, if maybe all of the supervisors invited all of you into a forum like this where we were telling you what we're debating and actively showing you what our views are. We're going to differ, that's why you have five supervisors, but how we differ is what defines us as a community, and that's not just something that's Middlesex, that's Virginia, that's the United States. We have things we're going to disagree about. I'm on the board at the Coes. My goodness, thank God for the Robert rules, or we'd be in there for seven hours. So I can fully appreciate Bob's concern for maintaining order, and I think it's appropriate. But that said, there is not enough discussion and communication in this county. We need to all be more active and more deeply concerned about the situation that our county's in. It's not Chicken Little, the sky is falling. And yes, we've got the water project coming, and sewer and broadband look like they're on the way, but there's so much more to discuss, more than I even thought when I started running. Lauren, my campaign manager, and I, on Monday, found ourselves going through the Meadows Mobile Home Park. There are 963 manufactured homes in this community, and I've been to almost 100 of them, and I'll tell you, it changed my life. It really did. We had a lot of good, hardworking people in this county that the feedback they gave me and Lauren that night was, nobody ever comes in here. I'm not registered to vote. That's got to change. And how do we change that? It's not going to be five supervisors. It's not going to be one supervisor. It's going to be filling these rooms to the point where we're dropping chairs, trying to make this thing ready for 500 people. We all have to be engaged, and I will sit down because that's my time.
School teachers rank near the bottom in pay compared to other school divisions in the region. Are the pay levels adequate, or should they be higher, which would require more county funding as a means to attract and keep good teachers? I've been asked several times, why is Middlesex with what many consider a good school system ranked near the bottom in teacher pay instead of near the top? How do you feel about this?
Of the surrounding 10 school districts, our teacher salary scales are among the lowest, and we contribute less towards our teachers' health care premiums than any in our region. So it is not surprising we have a high turnover. We must pay our teachers a competitive wage to stop some of this turnover. It's just good business. Besides, we as a county, I'm not proud that we pay our teachers the lowest amount of money. Teachers, like everybody else, need a good, decent wage, and the lowest wage in our region of 10. By the way, that certainly doesn't include, that certainly includes West Point, which is way above all of the 10 here. Yes, I want a better salary for our teachers. 50 to 55% of our graduating students do not go to college, and we do need them. We need to add a STEMs program, which is technical engineering and mathematics, which, by the way, engineering I kind of like. It may cost us $50,000 for a specific teacher in this area, along with all the things that they would need, materials. But thanks to John and myself, we have put into effect, have been approved by the board, a new solar system, which, if everything goes right, will create $75,000 for our schools for the next 25 years, and it isn't costing our schools a single cent. It's a wonderful thing. Thank you, John, for the help you gave us.
School teacher pay is a complex issue. It's a part of the broader school funding issue. County spending has been up about 16% the last four years. I'm going to bore you with some numbers. During that same period, school spending was up 19.5%, so the percentage of school funding, county spending is up. Couple more facts for you. State average of school spending for instruction is 66.9% of the school budget goes to instruction statewide, and Middlesex is 58.9%. The school board determines that distribution, not the Board of Supervisors. Local funding, state average is 52% local funding for schools, and in Middlesex, it's 68.4%. So we're higher than the state average. The Board of Supervisors controls that allocation. So just from those two figures alone, the Board of Supervisors is not anti-school, is not opposed to funding schools. With regard to vocational training, we're a small county. We can't afford every type of program offered by larger divisions. We have, I'll call it vocational training, but I think you know what I mean, through the Regional Bridging Communities Program, of which we are a part. So some of our students, I think the number's about 30 this year, get to go to a regional center and learn trades, such as Pete and John I'm sure will refer to. We also have advanced academic training through the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. This program stresses math and science, as Pete was alluding to. Advanced students can attend RCC classes and get associate's degrees before they graduate from high school. That's a way of leveraging our resources to get more than our school system itself can provide. On the subject of teachers, here's a quote from a member of the school board during a recent budget hearing. "If we could pay more, we could have better teachers." I think that's insulting to the teachers who are doing such a fine job and have put our school system where it is today, as one of the best in the area. Mr. Mansfield favors a competitive wage for teachers. Here's some facts about Middlesex County teacher salaries. Starting teacher, $38,500. A worker in Middlesex County who pays taxes to pay those salaries, $670 a week or $26,800 for four weeks. But the big news is, a 240-day contract teacher gets $46,210 a year. This would be to start, and $62,210,000 a year in compensation. So it isn't just salary, compensation is what the county pays, and it's $62,457.
School teacher pay is a complex issue. I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't want to pay our teachers more. The complexity comes in when we have to ask ourselves, how do we pay our teachers more? And what we've seen since I've been here is nobody's willing to talk about that. We don't want to talk about how we We don't want to talk about how we pay our teachers more. We just say, there's nothing in our pockets. The state hasn't given us as much money this year, we're not given anymore either. Mr. Superintendent, Mrs. Superintendent, go figure out a way to do more with less. Well, we've been doing that for a long time. And as a result, we don't have the division-wide literacy support specialists that we need, dedicated reading specialists that we need, the information technology resource teacher that we need. We've brought textbook funds to buy mobile devices for the classrooms, and we really haven't prepared our teachers to even use the mobile devices because we don't have that ITRT that we need and that so many other counties have. We don't have a trainer. So when a visiting team or our own home team gets injured on a football field, we sit there for as much as 50 minutes waiting for the ambulance to come while somebody has a dislocated hip. That's happened here. You know what else has happened here in this room tonight? We have a teacher, that was a teacher in our school, who still wants to live in Middlesex and lives in Middlesex. But they teach elsewhere. Okay, so we all know how this works. We have to figure out how to pay our teachers more and quit messing around with the discussion of, well, it's a complex issue. Underpaying our teachers is insulting. Talking about it is not. So, you know, I just, I think if we're honest about this, we need to look at our tax structure. If we were a state, name a state, any state, we would be the third lowest property tax rate of the 50. Okay? One of those states doesn't pay for their schools like we do through county taxes. Hawaii does not. So basically, there's 49 equivalent states, we're number 48 right there with Alabama. And it's a tight race. We're really working at getting to the bottom on this. And we've been there for a long time. And what we say is, look at the surrounding counties. Well, look at the surrounding counties and municipalities. West Point's an outlier, $1.15, $1.15 per $100 assessed. We don't have a paper plan, we're not going to get there, and nobody wants to get there, right? Colonial Beach, 58. King and Queen, 54 cents. Richmond, 67. Matthews, 54. Essex, 88. Gloucester, 68. So there are some counties that are doing things differently, but it's the hard work of going to you people and talking about it. Is it worth an extra penny? Is it worth two extra pennies? One penny of additional tax revenue is about $40,000 into the government's coffers. One penny on your $100,000 home is $10 a year. On your $200,000 home, $20. Any other mathematicians out there? Your $300,000, $30 a year. I don't want to raise taxes and just spend money. I want to raise some taxes so we can invest in our teachers and keep them here.
Yeah, I certainly want to help the teachers. Certainly would not be any different than anybody else here. It isn't just the teachers that are underpaid. We have deputies that make $31,000. They put their lives on the line every day and life $31,000 a year. The county Board of Supervisors last year decided we would do a salary study. We are still waiting on all the information coming on its salary. It's taken so long because the schools in the neighboring counties are not responding. And so we've given them, we've given the company Springer's doing it, a place to go on the state side. Of course, some counties haven't reported their salaries, but the only way to get the salary study accurate is to have the neighboring counties' information. And so that's being worked on. We want, we do not want the lowest paid teachers. We're tired of hearing that. I've heard for 30 years that our teachers are the lowest paid out there. That's not at all what we want. But I don't want other county employees. We have, in the Commissioner's Office and Treasurer's Office, we have very low-paid people. The salary study's going to show that they are way underpaid. It's a fix that has to be done in all places, especially the deputies and the teachers. When, I think Mr. Mansfield said that we have a good school system. We have a great school system. I think for the money that we, that they have, we have a great system. We have three wonderful school buildings. I think that the technology in the system is getting better every day. We're getting ready to put in a voice-over IP system that's going to, I think, help with all sorts of things in school, from security to just being able to page and do the things that are necessary. And it's also going to be a money-saving ordeal too, in the end. But the school teachers, that's just not even anything to debate. We know they need more money, but we have a lot of other people fix it at the same time. So I don't know what the answer is, but we'll just have to be working on it.
To stimulate the maritime economy in Middlesex, should the personal property tax on boats be eliminated or lowered so county marinas can better compete with the neighboring counties of Lancaster and Gloucester, which in effect have no boat tax? And please give reasons for your answer.
You're probably all familiar with the genesis of the program. Gloucester and Lancaster effectively eliminated the boat taxes in 2015. Marina owners maintain that the absence of a boat tax in the neighboring counties are hurting their business, and they use various studies like the VIMS study of 2007 to justify the claim. One of the statements made was that eventually boat tax revenue for the county would dry up as a result of the loss of boats. And of course, that's a great concern to the county, as we rely on the boat tax for about 4 percent of our county revenue. The 2017 boat tax revenue estimates now are in, and as much as people don't want to look at data, we expect to collect $960,000 this year from the boat tax. That's tax on boats, boaters, and jet skis. Boat tax revenue decline is leveling off. We might not see any further decline, and predictions of boat tax revenue falling almost to zero appear to be wrong. So what's the impact of the Gloucester-Lancaster cut in their boat taxes? During the period 2015 to 2017, in Middlesex County, we lost $199,000 in boat tax revenue. During the period 2012 to 2014, the three years before Lancaster and Gloucester cut their boat tax, we lost $355,000 in boat tax revenue, apparently for reasons other than the boat This isn't about fairness, there isn't a solution that's fair to everyone. The boat tax is one of the few ways that the state allows us to connect revenue, and if we don't collect it in the boat tax, we have to collect it in real estate tax. The real estate tax rate yields $215,000 per cent. Eliminating the boat tax would require a real estate increase of just under 4.5 cents. That's an 8 percent increase in your real estate tax if we eliminate the boat tax and replace the revenue with a property tax. Simple fact is that many owners in Middlesex aren't influenced by the boat tax. In my neighborhood, we lost five or six boats over the last couple of years, and not one of them was because of the boat tax. There are a lot of other factors operating here, and while I certainly understand the boat industry's plight, I'm not prepared to recommend that we raise everyone else's taxes by 8 percent in order to solve their problem.
I actually really respect Bob's position on this because it's hard to look at an industry and just tell them, no, pound sand, what you're telling me is not the truth. And he's stuck to his guns. We now, according to the Virginia Employment Commission, are 50 top employers. Three of them are marinas. I don't know if anybody would hazard a guess at what industry is our biggest employer, but it's our government. 31 percent of our jobs, of our 3,200 jobs, are our government. That's what we're left with. The industries are generally gone. If 86 percent of us are commuting out of here, and we're underpaying 31 percent of us, and we're slaughtering one of the only industries that was originally here, what are our options? Where does it go from here? I mean, this is a retirement community, it's a community that's a beautiful place to raise a family. I think we have less than 10 working farms at this point. What kind of jobs are we going to have here? Because this isn't just about the marinas, it's about what this place looks like without marinas. Those marinas are bringing in dollars, not from Richmond or DC, not exclusively anyway, they might be coming from Thailand. You can go down to Delta Ville Boatyard, for instance, and sit on that porch and have a real estate with somebody from Quebec. You can have a beer with somebody from Denmark. And you know where they bought their beer and their steak? Probably at the Delta Ville Market. So there's more than just boats and marinas at stake, there are also jobs. We've got other newspapers, other counties advertising in our South Side segment, and I consider that my home paper. I sort of think of this as a home and away game at this point, because the away teams have basically deflated the ball, and we're sitting there still trying to play with it. And they're advertising in our newspapers for our mechanics. They're saying, come work here, we've got plenty of work. And there go the jobs too, by the way. So it's not just the economic losses, it's those jobs. We already have 86 percent of us commuting out. Is 90 better? So again, it comes back to the same issue that is so difficult for us all to get our heads wrapped around, and that is, our property taxes are insanely low. And it's really awesome to talk to my sister in Philadelphia who's paying $250 per $100. I love bragging about it. But we don't need to be at $250, we're not Philadelphia. And I'm not suggesting we do go there, but I am suggesting that our Board of Supervisors should be having some really serious discussions, not just with each other, but with all of you, to see if we have it in us to consider doing more investment in our community. Because this isn't just line items in a budget that you zero out, this is investments, just like the schools and the teachers. If we invest in them, there are returns to be considered. And if we invest in one of the few industries that has supported us with jobs and outside dollars coming inside the county, we're going to see a return, and we have to consider that. And it's not as simple as just holding the line.
I agree, it's not as simple as just holding the line. The boat tax issue is very difficult because it is such a major industry for the county. But we have people in this county that can't pay their property, real estate property taxes now. And so I would have a very hard time raising my hand to go up even one penny and eliminating any of the boat tax. It's not a question, Lancaster and Gloucester are not Middlesex County. Gloucester County collects in sales tax $4.4 million a year. Lancaster collects $1.6 million. We collect a little over a million. So we're not the same counties. Gloucester also is, I wouldn't want a landfill, but Gloucester has a landfill, and they pay nothing for solid waste, and they receive almost $500,000 a year from their landfill. We pay $751,000 a year just in solid waste alone. We are not the same counties, and so to pigeonhole Middlesex as being one of these three counties and we should all do the same thing, we can't do it. We're not the same. We have, we've just talked about the school teachers being underpaid, the deputies being underpaid. All of these people live in their county for the most part, they're trying to have homes. How do you raise their real estate tax and then do away with the boat tax? I don't know how to do that. I've had two people in the boating industry in the Saluda District talk to me, and one person from Delta Ville talk to me. And all three of them, I told them, if you can come up with a way, please tell me, because I can't. So that's what I'm telling all of y'all too. If y'all have another way other than putting it on real estate, I'm all ears, but I can't put people out of their homes and do away with the boat tax.
I have some statistics that don't exactly go along with some of the other statistics that I heard tonight. I'm in favor of reducing boat tax. I think it's an absolute necessity, and I do think it's because of what is happening around us. Has anybody seen this before? This is what is being sent from Lancaster, and it says, no boat tax, no boat tax. And it says, set a course to Rappahannock Yachts before January 1, Tax Day, Lancaster County, no boat tax. Yes, we would have to, if we lower the boat tax, we are going to have to come up with some other method of raising one cent of revenue, or $250,000 in revenue. But in the last four years, we've lost $355,000 worth of revenue in tax. That's more than we're talking about. To do away with, or to reduce our boat tax from 98 cents down to 56 cents on boats which are 30 feet or more, we would only need to raise $250,000. And I will guarantee you that we will lose that in the next three years, because we lost it in the last three years. And as to whether we have crossed the mountain, you know, and everything is going to be okay, the worst tax year that we've ever had on boats was our 2016 collections. And we lost $182,000 in 2016. That's about what we're talking. I have talked to the marinas, and they understand that we probably can't go to zero tax. And they have agreed that if we can just get it down to 56 cents, that will, which is not quite half, that would certainly help the boat, and we won't be losing the boats that we have lost in $150.
Talking about alternative revenue sources. The meals tax was adopted several years ago, and has been very successful, and in general has been accepted, I believe, by restaurants and patrons. You pay the meals tax, and you expect to pay it. The lodging tax has been discussed in the past, but never seriously pursued. Is there other ways to raise tax funds other than through real estate and personal property taxes?
Things have changed in the county in the last year. Unfortunately, we lost Walt Hurley, and I've heard a lot of people talking about that's changed things for them in the lodging tax. And I don't know that I fully understand that logic, but that's what people are saying. The way I see it, the idea of a town hall is, I think, where we really start this discussion. I would love it if any of you want to stay afterwards and get in our ears and your supervisors' ears, they're still here, and give them your thoughts, give them your ideas. Because you can see, the solutions that we've been coming up with as a board currently have not been much in terms of creativity. And that's not a slight on the current board, that's, this is a tough issue. So maybe a lodging tax is worth considering. Meals tax is something we've tried. I've heard from some restaurant owners that it's killing them, I've heard from others that it's not so bad. Therein lies some of the complexity around how we diversify our tax burden and don't have it all lumped onto property tax. I would certainly be amenable to considering the lodging tax, but again, I think these town halls should start sooner than later. And I don't see why we couldn't call one for January, whether I'm elected to the board or not. I think it's a great idea, and I think many, many more people need to come out and give us their thoughts, so that the board is doing the will of the people and understands what your thoughts are. If you first understand that the problems that the board is trying to solve have to do with funding, and if you agree, yeah, we should be paying our sheriff more money, and we should be paying our deputies more money, and we should be paying our teachers more money. If that's the consensus of the population, and if we're getting larger samples and going out and talking to the population, perhaps the ideas will come from the population, trickle up through the leadership, and then we'll enact a plan through five members of the board, knowing that they've gotten a bigger population sample and have a better sense of what the right solution is. So I'm open to the lodging, I'm open to looking at land use, I'm open to looking at all of those things, but the reality is, we first have to understand what the people want to do with this county. And in order to do that, we need town halls, we need to be not just saying that, don't be afraid to contact me, we need leadership that's not afraid to contact you. And I've been out there on the streets contacting you, and I'm getting a lot of feedback, and I think you have to do that for a full four years, which is why I really only intend to run for one term. I think we all need to take turns on this board, and I think we all need to bring in fresh ideas so that we're not sitting here fresh ideas, so that we're not sitting here saying, "Boy, jeez, I'd really like to do something, but what can I do?" We've got to do better than that. Look around, Delta Ville is not in great shape. We have a wonderful event with the Oyster Festival, we have lots of tradition here, we have lots of wonderful things here that encourage people to come take a look at this place and think about living down here. Let's give them good schools too, but let's figure out if that's what we all want, and then make a decision on how we're going to pay for it.
I have already been talking to some of my constituents about the lodging tax, and that's just, I think, the only alternative revenue source that I have been able to come up with. There are just as not many things out there, but the meals tax has done a wonderful job as far as helping money, put money in our emergency services department, fire and rescue, get a portion of that, and it's just been very helpful to give them that extra money each quarter. But as far as I know, the lodging tax is the only thing that we are not doing, and I would certainly be willing to talk about that. And if there's anything else out there that other people have suggestions for, I'd be glad to listen.
I don't have any other methods, and I do like John's idea of everybody talking about it. The meals tax has certainly been a good thing for our county. And one of the nice things about the meal tax is that we only, we, people of our county, only pay half of it. The beauty is that people coming into our county need to go to restaurants, and they're paying the other half. So it's a tax that we don't have to bear the full support of. I have no wonderful ideas of how to raise money, other than I can tell you one last thing, losing our boats is not helping us at all. We lost last year almost one cent of property tax because boats were moving out. So let's not continue to dig deeper.
The state really restricts what we can do in the way of raising taxes. Tells us what we can tax and what we can't tax. Opportunities for additional tax revenue, we've already heard about the lodging tax, that may be a fairly good producer. We heard land use mentioned. That's a few hundred thousand dollars if we were to do it, and it creates a myriad of other problems by revoking land use. Because then property comes out of land use, goes into conservancy, and then we lose it One thing that the state did to us was to take essentially a large portion of the automobile tax rate. I know you don't want to hear automobile tax, but for jurisdictions in Northern Virginia, the state decided to give them back something, and they took away our ability to use automobiles effectively as a means of raising taxes. My answer in general is, we're stuck with the real estate tax, and the best thing we could do, and I'm going to address it in my closing, is to fix what's wrong with our real estate situation. Our real estate values are stagnant, they're reflecting economic trends outside of our area that are bleeding into our area, and I think addressing that problem and fixing it will give us the biggest return.
If you've been reading the Sentinel and following along, we're putting millions of dollars into infrastructure, with the broadband, the sewer, the water. And I would like the candidates to explain what they feel are the positives that are going to come from this, and also any negatives of implementing all the proposed additions to the county's infrastructure. And as a follow-up, will these improvements in the infrastructure require significant county funding in the future?
As a Board of Supervisors member, you are concerned with three things: health, safety, and welfare. Certainly, health is addressed by getting a water system in Delta Ville. The water in the lower end of the county, not everybody's, but a large number of the people have needed water for a long time. I've got friends down there that have not been able to drink their water, they've called water for years. So we need water in parts of the county, we need sewer in parts of the county, we have people that have to use alternative sewer systems, and they're very expensive, a lot of people can't afford those, so we need the infrastructure. I'm not for county taxes paying for those, I think everybody has to pay for those themselves. That's sort of a fee for service, and I think that that's appropriate. Broadband is something that I'm told we are needed. We have places up the county that have, don't have access to any, we have places in the lower end of the county that don't have it. Certainly, everybody needs broadband nowadays. People want to work out of their homes, they have children, that are really limited if they don't have some sort of internet service. I think, I would like to just address though, infrastructure. First of all, I don't think infrastructure brings growth, I think growth brings infrastructure. So I don't think these things are going to necessarily heal all of Middlesex, because in rural America, we are seeing a decline. And I expect in our next 2020 census that we're going to see that Middlesex has declined as well as most of rural America. So I don't know that the water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure will do what we need, but it'll certainly make lives a lot healthier, and will help with the welfare part of the county also, and safety, so that's all.
Water has been one of the things that I'm quite interested in. And I sent a proposal to DEQ that would save 8.25 billion gallons of water that would have been used by the paper mill, and at the same time, save the paper mill $3.27 million over the next 10 years. Now, why this was such a fantastic proposal was, it's what they agreed to. All we were saying was, "Let's do it, let's do it in the first two years rather than wait till the 10th year to save the water." Unfortunately, I haven't gotten an awful lot of response on that, but I addressed a group of very nice people from Middle Peninsula and the Upper Peninsula the other day, and they seemed to be receptive to it. Yes, we need to get, we need to get water to Delta Ville, and we need to come up with a way of paying for it. I guess we'll take a loan again, like we have been in a lot of our cases. But let's do get the infrastructure, because until we get the infrastructure, we can't really expect an awful lot of improvements in our county. Thank you.
I'd like to address the cost aspect of these infrastructure improvements first. At a meeting earlier in this year, I asked the board to combine our capital improvements plan with our budgeting. Herefore, the capital improvements plan has been essentially updated annually and put on the shelf, and the budget has gone on, and hasn't really paid a lot of attention to what's in the capital improvements plan. Turns out, if one thinks about this strategically and overlays the capital improvement projects that we need, that is, the radio system, the water system, the sewer system, broadband, and improvements to the high school, by the way, we have a big bill coming up to renovate the high school or something. If those are phased and laid out in such a way that the water system, for example, we would give bridge funding for a year or so while the system's being built, then users would begin paying for the system. That was one of the conditions of putting the water system in, that it'd be financed by the people who use it. It's not to say the county won't be paying something, because it'll be using water and it'll be providing fire protection through hydrants. So it will cost the county something, but not the water system per se. Anyway, my point is that if we were to phase water, sewer, broadband, and the high school, we could roll from one project to another on the back of about a one or two cent tax increase that would roll forward and cover all of those. That would be the entire cost for debt service over the next six to eight years while all of these systems could be rolled out. Pete, you mentioned, alluded to the environment, and one thing I would like to mention about the water system that we haven't really talked about is the fact that it's great for the environment, because it puts a price on water. You know when a good is free, people use it without regard to its source and its cost. If you're buying your water, you're going to be more careful with its use. That's the best conservation method you can imagine. So that's one step in the right direction, I think, and a corollary of a good water system. I disagree with Marsha that these wouldn't be enablers of growth, and I think, in fact, that the water, sewer, and broadband are the three necessary, perhaps not sufficient conditions, but necessary conditions for economic stabilization and growth in Middlesex County.
This is an interesting topic to me, because I find myself in my wheelhouse. I didn't really get into it in my opening, but I've been building for utilities for the last 10 years, solar power plants, and I know it's not water, but when I came to the Coves, we had a dire need to address our water and sewer issue right there at the Coves. We were getting ready to sell our assets to a corporation and lose control of our rate structure unless somebody stood up and said, "I'll run the water and sewer." And people like Jack here pushed me in front of the light and said, "Why don't you do it?" And I've been doing it ever since, and I've learned a lot about water and sewer, and there are some similarities to what I know from my utility experience on the electric side with solar power plants. I want to take a minute, because I think I come off sometimes as a little bit combative, and it's passion-based, but I want to take a minute to say, I really heavily approve of how this board handled the water situation. It wasn't perfect, but it was a difficult process, there were a lot of emotions and concerns, but I think we're very close to having a good result. And I couldn't agree more with Bob on his view that this is good for the environment to have a price mechanism on water, because just pulling it out of the well, you end up leaving faucets running, et cetera, et cetera. We have conservation, inclining block rates at the Coves, and the Urbana has something similar, and what that means is, you get a certain amount for a certain level, but as you use more and more, it becomes slightly more expensive, so that it encourages you to use less. And we don't do that just because we're trying to make a lot of money off of our neighbors. The state actually mandates that we have conservation programs in place, because there is an aquifer issue. Pete's tried to talk about it a lot, it's really hard for us, this isn't just a Middlesex thing, this is a Virginia and a United States thing, it's very hard for us to think long-term. I don't know why we are that way, but it's been this way for a long time. And to think 50 years out, we may be out of water in our aquifer, for some reason, our eyes gloss over, but it's very serious, and the state's aware, and they're getting more and more aware, and as I work with Sidner, who is seeing the data, and as I look at our test monitoring well over here that's gone down 10 feet in the last 10 years, you know, I'm seeing the data, and it scares the hell out of me, and it should scare all of us, and it's another thing we should be talking about at town halls. But the point is, I want to take a minute and say, I think the board did a tremendous job on the water, I think, I agree with Bob, this is going to lead to growth, we just have to be smart about what kind of growth we want, and we have to go to you people and understand what kind of growth you want, what's too much. I've heard people say, "We don't want to be Ocean City." I don't think that's going to happen, but we still need to be smart and we need to be in charge of how we grow. And part of that is developing our infrastructure in a way that encourages the kind of growth we want. And another thing I would add, one of my ideas, as I've gotten into the running and biking community here, and the active fitness crowd, I think when we open up that main artery of our county, water, sewer, broadband, and maybe a running path is something we should look at as well.
I'll take just a moment to talk about broadband, and then I'll open my second paper, which you'll be surprised to hear. I am on broadband committee with eight other people, or seven or six, or something like that, other people. And quite frankly, I don't really know that we've gotten a long ways on broadband. I would like to make the suggestion to you all, before I make it to the committee, we have three gigantic towers about equally spaced throughout our county. Why in the world don't we raise up a 360-degree transmitter, receiver transmitter for broadband to the top of these towers, transmit out as far as we possibly can, drive around with a truck, and pick up, or not pick up, the signal, and find out exactly what we would need to, to bring into our county to get broadband. We're never going to get it to 100% of the people, but to 98, or to what degree we can. Now, my second subject, moving right along, is the PPEA system. We've talked about a loss of money in the county, how are we going to get it? Well, one of the ways we get it is not lose it in the beginning. And the PPEA system, or how about, non-competitive bidding, has cost the county an unbelievable amount of money. My guess is, in the last four years, it's cost us $2 million. The PPEA system does not require competitive bidding. Now, we've talked about the radio system, to the point that everybody hates to hear Here are two, I got a competitive bid. This person says that we saved $441,000 by going with Harris. On the next page, I find we blew $1.5 million on that radio system. And I gave these things out, because I want you to look at it, and you make your decision how much we blew. And if you agree, please talk to us about not doing this kind of stuff anymore.
I disagree with Mr. Van Schild's purchasing policy. The PPEA is given to us by the state of Virginia to use. I don't think one board member should go out and try to get competitive bids on his own. I think that that's just not appropriate. First of all, we don't know if you bid to apples to apples, but the PPEA is in the code of Virginia, and it is a form of competitive bids. There's another form of competitive bids that we just recently did for an elevator for the Woodward Building, and that's another form, it's in our purchasing policy, and it's called professional services and request for proposal, and that's how we handled that. It was adopted in June of 2013 by Humanus Fund. So there's different forms of competitive bid, and to say that one is right and one is wrong, it's not appropriate. I have a, anybody that wants this, I have a nice little brochure just on the PPEA and how the state gives us this ability. By using the PPEA on the water system, we did not lose any money when we went out on our own the first time and had a system designed for Delta Ville. It didn't pass, because there weren't enough people wanting to hook up. That system was then scratched, and we started over, but the county lost no money whatsoever. Had we done this another way, we would have lost money. So to say one is right and one is wrong, it would be illegal for us to do things that weren't competitive bids and that the state... weren't competitive bids and that the state, that the state has not approved. We can't do things that are illegal, and so I think that that's just not appropriate. The other thing that I wanted to tell you all was that, for 30 years that I've been with the county, I've heard how we have not gotten this, or that, or another in our county. At no time has our board ever turned away any sort of commercial ventures in the county. I've talked to people that would like to have a McDonald's, or would like to have Taco Bell, or something in their county. We do not turn these things away. If they come, we will welcome them, but the problem is the numbers.
If my kids learn anything from me, it's going to be gratitude. And so I'm going to do the opposite of what I usually do, which is remember your please and thank you. And I'm going to start with the thank you. I want to thank Dave for being our timer, Ray for being our photographer, Tom for being our moderator, and I want to speak to our two supervisors and our county employee. I mean, these are people that are basically working for less than market value for the community, so thank you all. One thing I didn't mention on the infrastructure is, there's been, it's been proven that economic growth can be spurred from infrastructure development. I mean, if you research the TBA in 1933 and what that did to the Appalachians of the southern part of this country, there's no debate. I mean, it spurs economic growth, so I'll leave it there. This can spur economic growth, but we need to talk with our community and make sure we are all on the same page as to what kind of economic growth we want. On the procurement issue, I'm not going to get into the intricacies of the PPEA, but what I am going to say is, I've got the experience from my industry, in the solar industry, where I'm procuring $20 to $30 million worth of material every six months for a new project in a new state. I know how to get creative. I know how to get past impasses. I don't throw up my hands. If something has to be done, we get it done. We bring it in on budget. We bring it on time. We do it safely, and we bring it in with high quality. And that's what Pete and I have initiated with the solar project that I believe will go in next summer behind the elementary school, and it will save on the order of $3 million over the next 25 years. So there is a way to be creative, to procure through the market, and I knew all the players in the market, and I knew who to contact, and I brought them in, and there's only so many solar opportunities out here, so let's not think this is going to be something I can go back to the well on all that much. But the point is, I can step through procurement. It shouldn't be rocket science, but it does start with a five-man or woman board. Hopefully, we're able to diversify our board over the long term. But the point is, it starts with five of us getting together and understanding what all of you want, and then going out and procuring it and keeping it on budget. A big part of my platforms has been transparency and accountability. That's what I'm going to promise you, and that's what you're going to see. And you've already got my phone number. Most of you either know me or know my friends and know how to get to me. Those of you that avoid me, I understand. You know where I stand on schools. You know where I stand on the boat tax. Where I stand is that we need to do something different. We can't continue to sit and wait for the next board meeting and wait for the next data to come in, drive around the Fuller Highway. We all do it. You guys can see what I can see. What are we going to do about it? We have to have that conversation as a community. Economic development. I'm not saying everybody like me should come down here, but I work from home, and I make a good living, and I pay all my taxes. We can get more of those people with broadband. Finally, I just want to say, please, please to all of you, whether you vote for me, or Marsha, or Pete, or Bob, please vote on November 7.
I hope this forum has helped you get to know us better. If you know only one thing about me, I hope it's the fact that I really don't like to address the same problem more than once. Four years ago, Middlesex County had a failing public radio system that was costing too much and endangering the lives of citizens. We had bad water in many areas that wasn't only inconvenient, but potentially unhealthy. We had widespread sewage disposal problems that also represented potential health threats. We had inadequate broadband service on places, no viable service at all, and we had a faltering economy. Much changed in the four years since I've been on the board. I was appointed Emergency Services Director, and immediately we began working to replace our failing radio system. As a result, we'll have a new public radio system operating early next year. After much discussion, I presented the motion to the Board of Supervisors to form the Middlesex Water Authority. As a result, we'll have new central water operating within two years. And by urging the Board of Supervisors, continues to engage with the Hampton Roads Sanitary District to define ways to solve sewage disposal problems in Middlesex County. As a result, we could have sewage treatment plants in key areas within three years. Finally, I champion the establishment of the Middlesex Broadband Authority. I chair that organization, and we're in the midst of reviewing proposals to improve broadband service in Middlesex, the result of which would be a game-changing broadband improvement starting within a year. In other words, we have underway significant infrastructure improvements that represent the beginnings of a viable, vital business corridor down Route 33 from Saluda to Delta Ville. I am impatient with the pace of these infrastructure improvements, but our county is small and our capacity to affect change is limited. We need to focus on the things that are important to be affected. If we proceed sensibly, the short-term tax impact of our changes will be relatively small. The long-term impact will be overwhelmingly positive. We'll have more amenities, a broader tax base, and more tax revenue for everything, including schools, without necessarily having to raise taxes at any turn. I can't take all the credit for the positive things that are happening in the county, but I will take credit for championing all of them and leading many of them. I haven't just talked about important issues. I've done something consequential about them. Vote on November 7, as though the county's future depends on it, because it does.
I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming tonight. That was very good, and then, great job. Thank you all for coming, and we invite you to stay around and talk to the candidates and ask them questions, get to know them better. Thank you for coming again.